We are ready to move on to new business. The first order of new business is the Electoral Board, Russell Creek Voting Precinct. I believe Mr. Roach has information on that portion.
I do.
Okay.
My turn now?
We can get your own spot.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You guys all right tonight?
Good.
Thank you for the break if you well needed. My coffee at dinner time. How are you Clayton?
Doing good Malcolm, how are you?
Good. How's the boss man?
Walk and talk and breathe.
There you go. I'll give you this one son.
Thanks.
Ready? All right. I'm Malcolm Roach, I'm here to represent the Electoral Board tonight. Last time I spoke to you, I talked to you about the problems we were having at Russell's Creek. All right? We have found a new location at the church around the corner, New Hope Community Church. Pastor Rick is thrilled about it, the people there are excited. The parking lot's clean, it's handicapped accessible, it's got plenty of room inside, it's nice. The Russell Creek facility will not pass handicap accessibility. If we decide we're not going to move, we're going to have to spend a good amount of money to put rail all the way down so we can get wheelchairs down the ring. It's a win. The church is free, they're willing to let us have it. Right now, the county pays for the upkeep at the Russell Creek facility. So, we chip a little way at the budget, not much, but every penny counts, right? So, it's a win-win. Time is important on this one. I need you, if you could, to please expedite this. If the Republican Party up at the state decides that they're going to have more than one people run, one people, one person run for Attorney General and some other spots, we're going to have to have a primary. Primary beheld in June. This is going to require, I believe, a public meeting. Sixty or ninety day, what do we need?
So, they have an action in their agenda item to act on this next meeting?
Good. So, we'll need a public hearing and then we can get moved forward. Is there anything you need from me?
Is there any cost that's going to be incurred to the county to move this over?
We do, we're going to have to send mail flyers out and so forth and so on. If you look on what I gave you, maybe eight hundred and eighty dollars, nine hundred dollars in mailings, and then to actually move the facility, no, because we don't store anything at Russell's Creek.
Right.
So, just that. It is a huge safety issue, and it is much better for the senior citizens of the county, much better. A lot of people who are older, and I say that because I'm seventy, I'm older, they do early voting here because they do not want to use that facility, they're afraid to go there at night, it's poorly lit, especially if it's raining or whatever. Anything else? Short and sweet? Good. Any questions or let us know, we can talk to Susan at the Register's office, she can contact me if you need me, y'all, I'll help you in any way I possibly can. Thank you much.
Thank you. You ready for a motion? Yes, I like a motion to schedule the public hearing for April fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion before we proceed to vote? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Thank you very much gentlemen.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Glenda Morse, Commissioner of Revenue, about the reassessment.
Good evening, and yes, we're going to be talking about the reassessment, I'm sorry. In your packet, I provided each of you with the information from Department of State regarding the next reassessment. Virginia Code states that there shall be a general reassessment of real estate every four years. Counties with total population of fifty thousand or less may elect by majority vote of its Board of Supervisors to conduct its reassessment at either a five or six year interval. Tonight, I'm asking for a motion to extend the next reassessment to six years, which is normally what we do, which would make it effective January first, twenty twenty seven. So, that's all we need, is just a vote to extend it two years to be effective January first, twenty twenty seven.
So, do I have a motion to extend the reassessment for the six years to take effect twenty twenty seven? Is that correct?
That's correct.
I make that motion.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, in what I consider good news, we are looking at setting the real estate tax rate not to exceed seventy-three cents per one hundred of assessed value for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on that?
And we do need to do that now, I think, to make sure that things are, get out and, okay, be nice to have a little more breathing room, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, thank you all. Next on the agenda is the marker for the Patrick Central School. I believe we have some people here about that.
Good evening, Patrick County Board of Supervisors. My name is Mary Frances Sawyers, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am here this evening to express my support for the historical marker for Patrick Central School. I did not attend Patrick Central School, however, eight of my siblings did. The contributions of African-American educators and Patrick Central students has always kept my interest. I have planned and hosted several of their school reunions, as well as managed their social media accounts such as Facebook. Recently, it occurred to me that a historical marker would ensure that Patrick Central School legacy would never be forgotten. We're here today, not for funding today, but for your support. And now, I would like to introduce to you some of the former Patrick Central School students who will share some school history with you. Thank you for your time.
I'm James Hines, and I have resided in Patrick County all of my life, other than military, when I was in the military. And I started in the first grade at Patrick Central the first year that it was open, and I graduated in nineteen sixty-four, two years before it was closed. Now, a little history on Patrick Central. In eighteen eighty-six, as most of you know, there was a Ferguson versus Plessy, and it was determined that the school system could be separate yet equal. Well, they were separate, but far from equal. And in nineteen and fifty, around nineteen forty-nine or fifty, the handwriting was on the wall that there was going to be an integration in Virginia, well, in the United States. And in nineteen and fifty-four, Brown versus Board of Education, when it was determined that the school system was inadequate being two separate systems. So, Patrick Central was opened in nineteen fifty-two, and it was built on a dirt road in a black community that only one resident in the community had running water. But of course, there was a lot of places like that in Patrick County, I lived on the Fire Forkwood all my life, we didn't have running water either, so it's not like we was used to it. But anyway, the school, the road was paved two years before it closed in nineteen sixty-four, and my graduating class was the class that got the petition up and presented to the Board of Supervisors, and they paved the road. In fact, one of our very good benefactor factors, Mr. G.W. Gunner, we used to tend his land, and he was one of the person that was instrumental, he was in Board of Supervisor at that time. On the school board, and Mr. Reed Gunner, our neighbor, was in Board of Supervisors, and they was instrumental in helping to get the road paved. And also, the flagpole, I think that flagpole is on the accounting property now, that was at Patrick Central School, it was moved, that's just some historical information. But I do hope that we can get some kind of recognition for that school, because a lot of alumni come out of that school that went on to bigger and better things. Mr. Ralph Tatum that taught at that school became over three or four school systems up in the Fredericksburg area. And Ms. Geraldine Hagwood, I can't think of her last name, she was a Hagwood when she was there, became over, she had a doctorate, attained her doctorate degree, and was over the Memphis school system. And if you saw the movie where, about the wax that was on, is still on Netflix, how the wax sorted the mail in Germany during World War Two under adverse conditions, but Ms. Elizabeth Barker Johnson was my fourth grade teacher, and she never mentioned, we knew she was a wax, but she never mentioned what the hardship that they went through, it was just something that, she was a good teacher. In fact, we got a good education out of Patrick Central, so I hope something is done that we can get some recognition for it. Thank you very much for your time.
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Vera Smith Reynolds. I attended Patrick Central School, beginning in the first grade. Second grade, I was in Chicago, and I came back in third grade, and Mrs. Johnson was my teacher there. Awesome. Chicago wasn't fun, Patrick Central was. But anyway, I wanted to say that the most important education we received at Patrick Central School, when the teachers did not, when we received our books and somebody else's name had been written all the way down the bottom, the teachers would go out, get newspapers, articles, and any other things that they needed to educate us on a higher level. Segregation was not equal in any form or the fashion, and I used to think, why, why we using these books? They gave us the books, why aren't we using them? And when I got older, I could see the difference. I graduated from Virginia Union University, I graduated from high school at Blue Ridge in nineteen sixty-six, the last year Patrick Central was open. I missed my class there, and I made new strides at Blue Ridge. I was the only one that looked like me in the senior class. That's okay, wonderful people. We had a wonderful, I had a wonderful senior year, although I couldn't speak all year, I had a wonderful year. But Patrick Central was the foundation for African-Americans going to high school. My father attended Arat School in Arat, Virginia, he went to seventh grade, then he went to the military. But anyway, please, give high consideration for a marker and even more for Patrick Central. Thank you.
I'm here as, in support of a marker for Patrick Central High School. I am Annie Hilton, most of you, if not all of you, have heard of me and know who I am. I am a nineteen sixty-one graduate of Patrick Central High School. I started school at Patrick Central in the fourth grade. My first concern is, I don't understand as to why a school marker was not erected when the school was established. You probably don't know, I can't answer this either, because you were not aboard at that time, and you probably weren't even born, some of you. That's neither here nor there. At the time, my father, family, and probably other Afro-American families were more interested in how their children were going to get to school, because prior times, there was no bus transportation for us to go to school. I suppose they contacted their supervisor, as my father did. Our supervisor, Mr. Wood, in the Peters Creek District at that time, was Mr. Reed Gunner. He was a neighbor of ours, and Daddy went to Mr. Reed and said, now, this school is open, Mr. Gunner, and I'm expecting you to do something about getting transportation for my young'uns. And Mr. Gunner assured him that his kids would have transportation. We were in the Fire Forks neighborhood, and we lived on Fire Forks Road, that's where my grandfather established his family, and my father and his family was the only one that stayed in Patrick County out of six children. There were other people that lived below us, I don't think it was on Fire Forks Road, but they lived below us, and they walked up to our bus stop and caught the bus, and that was how they got to school. Today, I think seventy-three years later, it's time for a marker to be seriously considered. Back in the day, do you know, it was a school board matter at that time, and a Board of Supervisors, probably in conjunction with each other, to keep the school open or to close it. I know at the time, we had several parents that was on the PTA, that even went as far as going to Richmond to see if they could get the school to remain open. However, between the school board and the Board of Supervisors at that time, it didn't work. At that time, the Board of Supervisors were S.J. Pilsen, Reed Gunner, W.A. Cochrane, and W.G. Anderson, I don't know if any of you ever heard of either of them or not. The school board members at that time was Glenn Gunner, Hunter Tatum, Walter Mills, Gail Hargrave, and J.R. Vernon. I was hoping when I graduated college, I wanted to be a teacher, and I was hoping at that time, my senior year in college, that I would get the opportunity to teach at least one year at Patrick Central. However, I didn't, because that was the year that total integration was approved in Patrick County school system. So, in nineteen sixty-five, sixty-six, I started teaching my career at Stewart Elementary, and taught there until I decided to retire. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman Wood, Council Board of Supervisors Overby, Perry, Kendrick, Marshall, and Clerk. My name is Sandra Hilton, I am a, well, I can't say a graduate, I attended Patrick Central School from grades one through seven. Now, eighth grade, nineteen sixty-six, I attended Stewart High, and then after Stewart High, I went on to be the first graduating class from Patrick County High. So, I have a history of attending public education schools in the county. I am very proud of the county. Wherever I go, when I travel across the country, I applaud and I talk about my upbringing in Patrick County. Had it not been for the school system here, I would not have accomplished the things that I have. I'm now retired, and live in Kernersville, North Carolina. I grew up in the house that's on the corner of Blackjack Road and Route Eight, the White House on the corner, I was born in that house and lived there until nineteen seventy-one, when I went to college. My mother, Thelma Hilton, and my dad, King Hilton, housed the teachers, rewarded the teachers for years until the school closed, and then after the school closed, when the teachers would come, and they had no place to stay in Stewart, but they taught in the county. So, I saw numbers of, flocks of teachers go through. Most notable, we've mentioned Ms. Johnson, who was in the movie, the Netflix movie Six Triple Eight, she lived with us. I was about six, I didn't know her history. All I know is that I was always under her, she was in her room doing grading papers, and I was there because I was just a little nosy little girl. I, I said, I attended Patrick Central from one through seven, but actually, I attended the year before. I was a first grade drop-in. I loved school, everybody in the, in the house was going to school, the teacher was going to school, so I wanted to go to school too. So, they allowed me, of course, today, that is unheard of, to be a drop-in in the first grade, so I got a head start. The school not only provided education for African-Americans, or blacks, or negroes, as we were known back then, but it also served as a community center, it was our social outlet, it was our family, because we had nothing else. There's nowhere else that the African-Americans in the county could go at that time, but the school. So, I have fond memories of apple bobbing, of sock hops, of picnics in my mom's yard my seventh grade year, because we had nowhere to have a class picnic, the students walked nine tenths of a mile to my mom's house for a picnic. My mom would feed the basketball players before the basketball game, my brother was playing at the time. I don't know what their record was, it probably wasn't very good, but that's just how close-knit the community was, and, and the support that the school provided. It is very important for me, and I'm sure I speak for some other people who may not get up, that that part of our history is not forgotten, that it provided a formative education for me, it let me know who I was at an early age, where I could deal with everything else. And simply by placing a marker, I think is minimal, is the least that we could do to recognize the contributions that Patrick Central provided for the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all are doing good. Thank you all for being here today. My name is Regina Watkins-Brim, I am the daughter, the oldest daughter of Christine and Sam Watkins, from the Stella Loop area, near Christ, down where Red Hawk, Trinity Baptist Church is. And the reason I'm here tonight, I drove all the way from Winston-Salem, through those curves on Route Eight, to make sure that I got here to tell you that I am a proud, proud person of Patrick County, and have been raised here, going to Patrick Central from the first grade to the third grade, and then going from there to Hardin Reynolds, and then from there, I went to Patrick Central, now Patrick County High School, and I don't know if anybody's here that was the spirit of nineteen seventy-six? Nobody? Okay, that's when I graduated, I'm telling how old I am. But the reason I'm here is to implore you and to request that you take it within your heart to take the time to celebrate the legacy of Patrick Central. The legacy that my parents were the foundation for, they made sure I got to school and everything from the first to the third grade, and then going from there, it was just the foundation that I had while I was there. Just being able, being the first one that ever went to school, I was the first child that ever went to school there, and they were so proud of that. And the legacy, not only that is here in this county, but also in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, because not only did I go to Patrick Henry Community College, after that, that was my foundation, I went from there, got married to one of the Brims up in Arat, Virginia, no Chester Brim? Okay, I married Philip, okay? And somehow or another, he got me down to Winston-Salem State University, and Deacon Hilton mentioned about the teacher, Ms. Barker. I had the honor of meeting her because I volunteered for commencement at Winston-Salem State University. As you can tell, I love to talk, I am an admissions recruiter, I recruit people from all this area to go to Winston-Salem State, or to High Point University, or Wake Forest, or whoever, but just go to school, do something. And the most important thing that I wanted to convey to you was, during the time that I got a chance to meet her, before she passed, I was able to tell her how proud I was of what she did for us when we were at Patrick Central, because if you've read the story that Beverly has written in the paper, The Enterprise, okay, all right, she went through the whole thing, because this woman did the GI Bill, she served in the war, and then she wasn't able to even finish up, well, she finished up with the commencement at Winston-Salem State, but she couldn't, she couldn't actually go to commencement, because they couldn't find a teacher to replace her, because she had a job at Central, Patrick Central School, they could not find a teacher to replace her. Can you imagine how valuable the teachers were at that time? And lo and behold, she missed her graduation. I had the opportunity to meet her at a recent graduation, before she passed at the age of ninety-nine, because she wanted to turn her tassel. And I got a chance to tell her that Patrick County would not have been the same without her being in place, sacrificing the opportunity to go to her commencement, and she was actually there. So, this commemoration, this marker, is huge, and much bigger than what I think a lot of people think, because it's not just Patrick County. This is the United States government, the military, the notoriety of our area, and the fruit of what comes from Patrick County. And this is who we are, this is what we do. If you know, we recruit a lot of people in Wake Forest and those areas there, we got some of the best basketball players, some of the best track runners, you know, Philip was a track runner, Anson was a, was, Anson was cross-country. All of these things come back to be what I call a facet of the jewel of what Patrick County is. People always ask me, where are you from? Patrick County? Where is that at? In the mountains? I said, it's beautiful, I said, we got Brimland, we got all these other places, you need to come up there and visit sometime. We, we know how to grow, we know how to live, we know how to thrive, we know how to support each other. But this part is so historically significant that I want you to embrace the opportunity of having a marker, to commemorate what you've done. I've worked at R.J. Reynolds Tobacco Company, you know, R.J. Reynolds came from here, right? I tell them that too. If you go to the library, you're going to see one of those bricks from one of the factories that burned down, and I'll make sure that I got that to the library here in Patrick County, so that they could see the significance of what Patrick County gave to us. And the only reason Reynolds went to Winston-Salem was because they had a railroad, Patrick County didn't have one, am I right? Okay, just like American tobacco, they went to Reeds with it, thought they had a railroad, and the wagons couldn't carry all of that tobacco that way. So, I'm gonna stop, because I'm a genealogist, I'll keep talking, but please, take it in heart and embrace it. It's a jewel, and it's going to grow, and it's going to be very significant. I've already talked to the university from where Ms. Barker Johnson is a graduate, as I am, and they are willing to get behind this with you and support you in any way possible with the alumni group to be able to make this a reality. Thank you for your time, and again, thank you for being here tonight, and y'all pray my strength as I go back down the road.
My name is Lillian Penn-Mans. I was in the first... I was in the first class that went to Patrick Central in first grade in 1952. Before 1952, there was no public high school for the students in Patrick County. My sisters and brothers, they walked to school about six or seven miles. I lived in Kreitz, Virginia, not too far from Harden Reynolds Estate over there that's now owned by Virginia Tech. I rode 18 miles to school. When we started out and doing the duration of the school, it was about 600 students of us. In each of the classes, it was 20 or less. We were not, I guess, so often we had been deprived. But when we got to Patrick Central, I can remember thinking my mother was saying, "My would a big nice school." And she would say how she would have loved to have gone to school. But it was hard even for them to get back and forth to school. I remember during the time, she would say that, and my father too, they had to work the fields and they couldn't go to school. So when Patrick Central was open, and I was in the class with James Hines that talked about, I rode that bus and we had the dust that come in the window, but we were still excited. We were so excited. And children at that time, they were very respectful of the teachers. We had some good teachers. Ms. Johnson was one. Ms. Johnson lived in the Spencer area, and I lived in the Kreitz area. She drove a school bus. And that was one of the fascinating things about, for me, when I was in her fourth grade class was the fact that she could drive that bus with them gears in the floor. You know, most women at that time, especially black women, could not drive. Now, a lot of the students that went to Patrick Central have gone on and have done quite well. And I think that was because we were given a good education and we were encouraged by our parents to sit in the seat and to learn. They often told us, my mother and father did, "We didn't have the opportunity that you have, and I expect you to at least sit there and learn. You might not be the smartest one in the class, but I expect you to learn." And I would love to see a marker for Patrick Central School to recognize all of the people that went there. And we had some very good teachers. We had some very good students. I can't think of any student that really got in bad trouble while we were at Patrick Central. But when you think about being just 14, the school lasted only 14 years. But now, those of us that are still living, we look forward to Mary Sawyer's Fonz and the reunion and getting us all back together. I was looking at the group that was here today, and I thought to myself, "So many of them, I know will not say anything today, but if they would all just stand up, the students that went to Patrick Central, so that everybody can see that you were really given a good education." I thank you for your time. And please consider our marker. We need to be, our children and our grandchildren need to know where the school was located and what our parents went through before there was an opportunity. They went to schools in individual, one-room schools, or either they went to church in the churches, because that's where my sisters and brothers, they had to walk about six or eight miles to go to school in a church. So Patrick Central meant a lot to us. And I think it would be good if we could have some recognition of our school. Thank you for your time. And please give us a lot of consideration. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. This is gonna be short and sweet. I didn't start Patrick Central till fifth grade. We moved back from West Virginia when the coal mines closed, and I started then. What that school did, it educated a lot of us Afro-Americans. We had doctors, lawyers, teachers, a little bit of everything. We had 14 teachers, the best that I can remember. And we had 642 students at that time. And it opened in 52 and closed in 66. And me, myself, I went to three schools since I left Patrick Central School. And I probably could've went farther, but they weren't really my thing. I finished cosmetology, and I had a shop for 12 years. I'm the oldest of eight children, and four of us went to Patrick Central. And as the ones that stood, they have made a great life, a great life. Once the school was integrated, things changed. Because when it integrated, you had to sign for your kids to go to Woolwine before it was a mandatory thing. I would not sign. I would not sign. Because I had come up and I knew what was coming up. So my son went to Woolwine after it was decided he had to. And he was treated different. And I say to you, the sign needs to go up. It needs to go up. So everybody will know where we come from. And you all think about it. I don't have time tonight to tell you, but I'm one of the kids from one of the slaves of Patrick County. My great-grandmother was a slave. And sometimes we have time, we'll go into it. But just think about this sign. We really need it.
I'm Ronnie Giewen. I'm from Stewart, Virginia. I knew, I used to know all the whites. And I went to Patrick Central and finished school in 1963. And I lived in Stewart and went to work for a rental supply company. Stayed down there 35 years. Worked for a good company and paid good money and was real blessed. Used to work for George Hooker, Rue Wheeler, Lawrence Berg. I named them all right here in this town. They'd come and get me in the evening. And I'd get off and get out of school, and I'd go to work for them, whatnot. But I left that and went to work at Rell, went to Surry Community College. And Surry Community College and High Point College, took classes at Surry Community at High Point. And I was glad to do it. I think the world of my classmates. Because they made me what I was, want to swear in school. But I was a pretty good basketball player. So y'all pray for me.
Okay, thank you all for your presentation. We'll go ahead and I'll ask for a motion to approve the submission of an application for a highway historical marker for Patrick Central School.
I would be honored and privileged to make a motion to provide a letter of support for the submission of an application for a highway historical marker for Patrick Central School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Okay. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to add, so some secondary things, exactly what Ms. Brim was saying. This goes a lot bigger. As our county strives to establish itself as to have that reputation and to be a tourist destination, tourists look to an area more than just the beauty and the scenery, but also to be inspired by our history. And this embodies that very same inspiration that encourages and supports our tourists to come here to find themselves. So thank you all for all your work and putting this together.
Any other comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Marshall.
This marker represents a certain cultural equity that folks have a right to and their descendants have a right to. It's also a history that needs to be preserved, so I vote yes.
Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you all. Ms. Sawyer, is there any place that we could send donations to? Any place that anybody that's interested can send donations?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, is there any place that anyone that's interested can send donations to help with the marker and everything? Is there?
Okay, yeah. Okay, you can, you mean, I give you my sale or something?
Yeah, we can do that if somebody's collecting all that. There's probably several people that would like to be part of that because it is pretty historical.
Well, I'll give that to you and you can pay.
Okay, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under new business, we added grants to the agenda.
So I would like to address the grant request from the Jeb Stuart Rescue Squad. I think that the grant is very well warranted, and I'd like to have further discussion on why we would not support.
So, um, the comment that we would not support the grant is not accurate. As you all know, recently, we've had quite a few grant applications that did not have their due diligence done with them. And we've had to go back to the state agencies and say, "Sorry, we can't move forward with this project." Professionally, I believe there's only so many times we can do that before state agencies start looking at Patrick County grant applications and go, "Is this legitimate or not?" And so Mr. Castle made me aware of that there were two organizations in Patrick County that after the recent winter wanted to be warming centers and that were interested in grants. And I said, "Okay, that's great." And they both serve two different geographic areas. I said, "Just need proof of the matching funds." As you know, we recently had a project that we had to turn, we had to reject because we did not have the matching funds. And since it's a warming center, that would have to be staffed. Just a simple kind of, "Hey, this is how we're gonna staff it." To my knowledge, we have not received that information. Now, if the board wants us to go ahead and me direct staff to go ahead and apply for the grant without that information, that is your choice. I was just trying to add a layer to make sure that we were doing our due diligence as, you know, Patrick County and putting forth a grant application that had its due diligence. But, you know, the board can give whatever direction to staff, they would so choose for that grant application.
Okay, I just think that there's, I don't know if there's a communication mix-up or what, but, you know, it's... I've had multiple people contact me about this.
Well, no, sir, nobody's contacted me. So I apologize. I can't address an issue that I don't know about.
They have went through Mr. Castle.
This was provided two months ago. The grant was requested two months ago.
Yeah, so I mean, we're happy to help them. We're happy to, you know, help with whatever. Like I said, all we wanted to see was just that they could provide the matching funds and that if they were gonna provide a warming center, that they would be able to staff it.
Okay, well, I think as long as they're willing to provide the matching funds, then we need to provide the support as necessary to get the grant applied for. I mean, we need to look for any grants that we can possibly get.
So moving forward, like I said, I have nothing in writing that proves matching funds or staffing for a warming center. So moving forward, when somebody approaches us, what I was told two months ago was to make sure we do have proof of matching funds. So moving forward, how would the board like me to request that information from outside agencies?
Well, I don't think that the organization has requested any matching funds.
Right, they have to provide matching funds to the grant, just like with the VDOT grant.
As long as they sign a commitment saying that they're willing to take that on and provide the matching funds, I think that's sufficient to move forward.
Okay, so have them sign some paper saying that as of this date, they do have the matching funds?
Yeah. I mean, in the situation with the VDOT grant for Kreitz, the board made a decision and requested a document stating that the agency was willing to meet the matching fund request. That was never done. So I just wanna make sure...
Exactly. So that's why we requested it this time.
Well, it hasn't even been brought to the board. That's...
Right, because we never received it.
I understand that. But I wanna make sure that we are being supportive of the agencies that are requesting the support.
Yes.
Because if we're not, then we're not doing our jobs.
And as soon as I get that document, I will be happy to provide it and put it on the agenda and bring it to the board.
Well, I understood that.
When is this grant due?
About five days until it was gone, ain't that right?
When is the grant due? 14th or 15th?
March 14th. This is originally due February 14th, which is Friday.
So it's due Friday. So I guess the board could take an action if they get us the document proving matching funds. You know, I'll be happy to email that out to y'all. Maybe y'all can make a motion to approve the grant application pending receipt of that.
Can Jeb Stuart provide the matching funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask for something in writing proving that?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's acceptable. Yeah. So I think what we need, Mr. Overby, is a motion from you or anyone stating that once we receive notification that you have matching funds and that you're gonna be able to staff a warming center, if that's your goal, then we're ready to proceed on with the grant application because I know time is of the essence right now. I think that's where we're at.
That was the initial requirements in the first place, right?
Yes.
So once they meet the initial requirements, then we're good?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I will make a motion to support the request to apply for the grant contingent upon Jeb Stuart providing documentation that they will indeed meet the matching funds required.
What about staffing?
And staffing requirements as necessary. I think they've already done that.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I got some discussion. I'll get around to it.
Okay. So any discussion now?
I don't know if it's, is there any, has there been anything where they've applied for grants to fire departments and the volunteer rescue squads that we've had any trouble out of it? I know they get a lot of money, or they have over the years.
I'm not.
And I don't know of anything that's caused us any trouble. So if you, if you...
Right, but we have a process. I guess, when I was given direction two months ago, I took it as Patrick County organization as a whole wanted more due diligence on its, before coming to y'all with grants. Now, if y'all want to divide up and say, "Hey, that doesn't apply to rescue squads or fire departments," then that would be up to y'all and we won't request any information from them. You know, they're just, you know...
Unless we have problems out of them that would cost us to do that, I don't see why we're...
But I can't execute a process, kinda just picking and choosing. That's not equitable. I can't request for Vision Kreitz to provide something, but tell Jeb Stuart they can't. I don't feel comfortable in that position unless the board says, "Hey, we're not gonna require our volunteer fire and rescue squads to provide any documentation."
Mr. Castle, the grants that most of the fire and EMS apply for, that's directly them, so it would be...
We have to use our, I mean, if we're a pass-through, it takes staff time.
That's what I'm saying. They're a pass-through, this particular one for the general. Are all of them like that or just...
A lot of them are.
Not all of them.
Not all of them.
A lot of them are though.
All of them are. The agency can do them.
Patrick Carey recently got a pretty good-sized grant like that that the county didn't have anything to do with.
If that's the case, we're on our own. We don't even touch those.
We're not trying to interfere with them.
Well, they tried this on their own too.
Right, but the state requires it go through the county. We can't change that.
I can understand the issue with that.
But I wouldn't restrict them anymore when you had to because anything they can get and don't get, we're gonna have to pay for.
Right, and we're not trying to restrict them. Like I said, just two simple things, pieces of information we wanted to do before we submitted the grant on their behalf.
Well, I'd say in a case like that right there, you need to because five days, they ain't even gonna get it. And, you know, I was talking to Sheriff the other day about some stuff. He said sometimes he don't find out about a grant till maybe it... He says sometimes he don't find out about a grant till maybe at a meeting and got two days to apply for it. And in two days, you ain't got time to come back to us instead of cleaning up and all that. So I don't know. I know what you're saying, but I don't know what's the best way to figure it out because we don't want to lose the money, not for my grant.
Do we have a written grant process?
We're working, that's what we're working to establish.
I just want to make sure that we're not providing a roadblock for, you know, agencies when...
We are, and we, you know, for the instance, like Mr. Kendrick said about Sheriff Smith, we told him, you know, "Please just at least let us..." I mean, I can't guarantee that I'm gonna be sitting at my computer at 4:00 PM tomorrow if a grant is due at 5:00 PM tomorrow. I mean, just that system is not working. I apologize. I just, you know, the system's not working. And so, but we've also said, "If something comes up last minute, you know, let me and the board know immediately," and so we can, nobody's said, "Hey, you can't apply for that grant." We haven't put any roadblocks in front of anybody. We're just trying to get... I mean, Lori got a check recently for a grant. We didn't know where it went. I mean, you know, we're just trying to get, like you said, you asked about a policy. We're trying to get, trying to get a system around. I think once, and I think once we get through it, I think it'll just be commonplace, just like everything else. I know there's a little bit of growing pains when you ask people to do one extra step, but the grant form is not made to be overly burdensome. It's just informative, and that way we can just make sure we have our hands wrapped around every thing.
And I think especially with this grant, they've had two months to get the information.
I think we first started talking about it, Scotty brought it to me pretty early on.
Sent the email January fifteenth.
So, I mean, it's not like they found out yesterday. So, I mean, there needs to be accountability and responsibility, and that's exactly what we're trying to establish. And so if they can provide the information, then by all means, you know, but...
I understand that, but if the agency is not requesting county funds, we should not be standing in the way.
With this particular grant, that this...
We just wanna make sure it doesn't end up coming back out of the county's budget, which has happened previously. We're not saying that they aren't gonna provide it, but a letter saying that they are going to provide it really puts that assurance back for the county.
I understand that. The situation with Kreitz was totally different because the board made a decision, and it was not executed. So this is a totally different situation.
Consistently across all departments, all organizations, nonprofits, everything, it makes consistency key for all of us.
And this particular grant has to get to the county, right?
Like I said, as simple as just letting us know that they have the matching funds and, you know, the staffing to work on warming center, and we'll be happy to get the grant in by Friday.
I recognize Ms. Spangler since she is on Jeb with the treasure.
And I try to start, I just have a question. Who did you send the email to?
To Scotty.
I forwarded it to Derek.
And then you forwarded it to Derek. So how much time went between?
Because it wasn't just Jeb Stuart. There was also a church that was requesting this as well, so it was two organizations. So we just needed those from both entities.
Did he send you the information?
Because he had trouble getting them out to get the quotes. But, so then, we don't have a problem. I just want you to know, we don't have a problem signing whatever information you need. We just need to get the information that we need to get to you. We just need to know that you need. So, I don't mean to say the communication is a problem, but I think that if the communication goes a long time in between, here's an email, do you have it, you know, or a follow-up or something so that, to make sure that somebody got that email or whatever. You know what I'm saying? That's all.
I didn't hear.
But we don't have a bit of problems, you know, signing whatever you need to say that we've got it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, I'll do my best to rephrase it, or to restate the motion, to apply for the grant or to, I'm sorry.
How was it? Submit the grant on behalf of Jeb Stuart.
Upon receipt of their letter that they have, the funds, and the staff to do it. Is that close enough, Mr. Overby? I think it's your motion, right?
Yes, sir.
And we had a second already, so with no further discussion, we'll go ahead and move on to vote. Mr. Marshall?
I do want to see some administrative consistency in these grants. One's really not that much different from the other one. I believe you were directed to make darn sure that we had all the information we needed before it was brought to the board, if I recall. I'm gonna vote yes, but I want to see the consistency in here.
Okay, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So if you can get that to, I assume it goes to you? No?
Scotty is the, as, in Scotty's position, he's the...
So as soon as you receive it, you hit that forward button and get it to where it needs to go. Let's not miss out on any chance, okay? Thank you all for that. I think that concludes all of our new business. Under old business, budget discussion.
Amy's gonna bring up just a very brief presentation, just to start us off. And then after that, it'll kind of be up for the board to give feedback based on the draft budget. All right, so first thing I wanted to do is just go over the calendar to make sure we're all on the same page. As requested, we started the budget process earlier this year. So CIP requests were due to the finance office in November. Operating budgets were due to finance in December. We unfortunately did not get all our budget requests in on time, but we worked with department heads to get those as quickly as possible, and we presented, kind of a raw draft budget was distributed to the Board of Supervisors Budget Committee members since the Board of Supervisors, since all Board of Supervisors members make up the Budget Committee this year. We had our first budget work session on February twenty-fourth. Here we are today. Y'all can remove the question mark from that since y'all decided on that. And then we'll have another work session in two weeks, and then, you know, it just goes on from there with a proposed adoption of May twelfth, 2025. Does anybody have any questions or feedback on that? Like I said, this is similar to previous years, just a little bit earlier as requested. Okay, nothing real specific to talk about here unless, you know, I just wanted to kind of put these up here. I know there's been some chatter about the capital request. I sent some additional information through email to the board on Friday. I did, kind of administratively, if y'all'd like to hear it, I think that the floors and the community college building could probably wait a year or two. Also, the election equipment, we don't need until twenty-eight, so that's wait a year or two. So those are no longer on this list, but we're more than welcome, more than happy to add them back on if y'all'd like. And then Mr. Kendrick asked for some options on mowing of the dams. So originally, we brought to y'all to purchase a VinTrak tractor, which would be about forty-two thousand dollars. Yes, it'll be used for the dams, but of course, it could be used for other items as well. Mr. McGinnis got a quote for a remote control slope mower. So it's something, it would still take staff time, of course, to operate, but it'll be much safer for them and, of course, much cheaper. And then we got, we requested three quotes for mowing of the dams properties. We got two back. As you can see, they are vastly different. I can't explain why. That's just what we got. One gave us a quote for sixty-eight thousand, and one gave us a quote for twenty-three thousand, and that was for three times per year. So if y'all have any questions or...
Do you have copies of those quotes?
Well, one was verbal. I can send it in an email. The guy just called us and gave us a quote. The other one, he did write down.
Did they actually go out and look at the property?
They said they did, and I think, Mr. McGinnis, I think they took, I think Magnus took them out there, correct?
Could you also send me the locations of the properties?
Yes, sir.
Since they're all in my area, I would like to look at them. Okay, sounds good. Thank you, sir.
I was thinking about something else.
Could you go back, please?
When we bought that four-wheel-drive tractor and the bush hog, that was what it was supposed to be for. Bush was to mow those dams, and they've still got it down there. Plus, they've got a track hoe with an extendable bush hog all across it. So if we're gonna buy this stuff, do we still need that?
Sir, that was before my time, so I can't...
I remember it. I remember it. I had to think about it for a little bit, but I remember it.
The, I would not send employees to cut three sections. You can cut ninety percent of that equipment we have, sir. There's just some, I'll show it, you know, Mr. Overby when we're there. There's a slope, sir, that is extremely dangerous. And I'm not one to use words about danger. So something on some of them slopes just needs to be done, and maybe the most costly advantageous thing is to, like I think this best suggests, to find other copies to cut. But to answer your question, sir, because I was wondering, yes, we do have a tractor, and I was under the impression it was purchased from that maybe two years ago, a month or so ago.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about. Mr. Allen trying to say something there.
The tractor, and I'm not fucking y'all's business, I would not put a tractor on those dams. The Taboga Mini Skidback that you're talking about does have the bush hog, and that's what it was bought in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen to take care of the dams. And up until, how long have they been taken care of?
That's what I was talking about.
When I viewed, sir, you know, and this gentleman obviously has more knowledge, probably been here six months, but when I viewed that, there's times when those tractors have gone down some of those areas, they hadn't dropped that funded loader as an anchor to stop from running in. So there is some extremely dangerous areas.
Yeah, but like I said, you got the...
I don't know where they come in, but there's no way that tractor needs to be on the dams because I looked at the dams for years. And that's when they bought the excavator.
Any excavator.
Twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen with bush hogs on the long one. And what they've done, they kept the blade downhill, pulled up, and then set the blade down steady to get when it was mowing side to side.
Well, this is a tight year to be spending anything we don't need to actually spend it on, and I was told that they didn't need it down there, so... That it'd been being done, so...
Oh, they also gone for two times a year, four times a year.
Uh-huh.
So at least maintain that before my time, two times a year, how they're maintaining that, cutting four times.
I was wondering about that, too, though. Most things on the farm, if you bush hog it twice a year, it's okay. And I wonder if they've been some requirements on it, or just somebody wanted to do it.
I have my personal opinion, sir. Some people have a few little log services on behalf of the county.
Mr. Kendrick, what I thought that started was years ago, probably two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. The dams had not been maintained, and they've got trees on, they're brush. And the county did hire Richard Lowe to bring his up and bush hog, get them all down where they needed to be. And I think he may have done one more year, and then later on, the county bought the mini excavator to take care of them. After they got, after they got to the dam the first time.
So any other questions, feedback on capital request? Did y'all want to leave the community college floors and/or the election equipment?
Probably not. I don't have no, no choice on the election.
Sir, I can't, I'm sorry.
We're probably not gonna have any choice on the election.
Probably do have two years.
We didn't need it until twenty twenty-eight. We were just trying to, you know, break the cost up over three years, but we will have the reassessment done before then. So in theory, you could wait until two fiscal years from now.
That would help. That's what, seventy-seven thousand?
Sorry.
Seventy-two thousand, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it would be best for us to push that off.
I apologize. I haven't had a chance to go look at the courthouse carpet.
There were pictures in your...
Yeah, but I'd still like to touch and feel. And I did go to the community building and look at that. How?
So do we want to leave in the community college floors, or...
No, I don't believe so.
For the adult education building roof, can we assess how much we actually use that building? I mean, is there...
Well, it has three, it has three tenants in it currently that use it, you know, Monday through Friday.
Is there no way that we can move them into another facility? I mean, if the building is, you know, as bad as what this is saying, I don't think probably anybody needs to be in it to begin with, but...
I agree with Mr. Overby. I think we should look for maybe a new office space for those threes.
I mean, would it be possible to put them in the community building?
We can, we can work with those all, probably four or five agencies between P and H and three. And, you know, I mean, there's four or five agencies we'll have to work with, but we can, we can do that.
I'd like to see, you know, some sort of explanation on space utilization. Because if it's, if the building is too far gone for, you know, for us to do a lot of things, maybe we need to look at moving on from the building. And then the access control system, do you want to discuss this here, or do you want to discuss that in closed session?
I mean, if it's a question about cost or something, I'm happy to discuss it here. If it's a question about specific security items, probably best for closed session.
Here's, here's my thing. We, we have the secure facility upstairs for the courts.
I think the judge would disagree.
Well, I mean, we can all wish and moan, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a requirement.
It is per state code.
No, it's not. The requirements that you referenced were for Circuit Court, not for J D and R, and not for General District.
We can have...
We have this floor secured by a deputy all day long. And I believe that what we have meets the requirements, and we do not need to secure the entire facility. I just spent half a day over in Carroll County looking at their facility today. They have absolutely no access control for the entire building with the exception of the court wing. And that is where the court clerk and everybody for the courts is located. Everybody else and, everything else in the building is completely open. They use a key for every door. I just don't see that we need to exceed what Carroll County is doing because I feel like Carroll County is in a whole lot more danger of a position than we are. You know, as long as we've got the third floor staffed with a deputy as we are required to do so, I don't think that we need to go any further. You know, if there's a concern with people walking into county administration, we'll lock the door. I mean, we can put a doorbell on the door and somebody can go over there and open the door every time somebody comes in, but I don't want to make...
Sir, this, the one point of entry was a request from Judge Ziegler, probably a year ago or so now. It might have been not quite that long ago because we were already through, we were already knee-deep in the last year's budget process. That's why this didn't come up last year. But I'll be happy to take the board's, that feedback back to her and let her know that we think that we meet the requirements.
The third floor, the third floor is the courthouse.
So just let her know that it is the Board of Supervisors' opinion that we meet the requirements.
Yes.
I think it's something we need to talk about, especially offline, as we get knee-deep into specific security elements. And I think it's jumping the gun to say that right now. I think we need to have more discussion before we go to Judge Ziegler and say, "Hey, look, no, the whole board says that top floor is good enough." I think we need to hash this out.
I don't think that we need to create a deterrent for people to come into this facility to conduct their business. They come in here to pay their taxes. They come in here to go to the DMV. They should not be forced to go through a metal detector to get into the building, or go through a deputy to get into the building.
Phase one wasn't requesting that. We were just requesting, the request that came up last year was a single point of entry because right now, there's quite a few exits in this building, and so what was, the first phase would be a single point of entry with all the other building, all the other entries and exits secured.
Well, we can make a single point of entry right now.
Well, they take that key card lock on that.
Take away the keys to the exterior doors, and everybody just have the front door open. I mean, there's your single point of entry.
Don't they have key card locks on them now?
No, sir.
The other doors don't? None of them?
No, sir.
I mean, Carroll County's does not have key card locks. They have keys.
Well, do we have to have the court in this building? Can't hold both courts in the other building?
That would, I can't, I can't answer that. That'd be a question for, for them.
I mean, I, I just believe that we meet the requirement per the state right now. And if we go any further, we're going above and beyond.
You could, you could probably pretty reasonably secure the administration building. I mean, the administration office, the treasurer's office, and the commissioner of revenues with just electronic lock and a button inside with a camera maybe on the outside to see who was at the door. And a button inside that Melissa or Amy are sitting there, not Amy anymore, but push a button to let them in. And, and that would secure that down there, and you got security up here.
And we can save a whole lot more money by just locking the door and walking over to it and opening it when people want to come in.
Would it, would it be helpful to have the, um, the company that quoted us, I don't know, if they can, um?
Well, even if we go with that, that company, we're gonna need to get two or three quotes.
Oh, right, procurement, yes, exactly.
And some other ideas.
I mean, I also requested Department of Homeland Security do a physical assessment as well of the building.
Um, I mean, I can walk into the Carroll County government complex with a handgun on my side, and nobody will say a thing, because you're aiming to walk into the building.
But you're also not supposed to have firearms in any of the government buildings.
No, you can't. That, that is not the requirement.
No, you're wrong on that. No, it's certain federal buildings, but not, not, not like administration building.
The county Board of Supervisors can set whatever security requirements we want.
And sir, we're not trying to.
Outside of the courthouse.
We're not trying to make a deterrent for people to pay their taxes or to pull a building permit. That is not it at all. You know, we were requested by the judge to look at, you know, key card entry for the other, the other entries and exits, have a single point of entry. That way, we can track people coming in and out better. Um, that's, that's phase one.
Well, I mean, we can set up a single point of entry by simply locking the doors. I mean, that's, that's not that hard. I mean, we don't have to physically put key card access on, on the doors. We can just lock the doors and say, everybody's got to come in the front door. Simple. Doesn't cost us a dime.
If you do talk to the judge, don't include me in that, because I disagree.
I can just see the judge saying like they did with, um, Appomattox, I think. The judge said, you know what? Fine, don't. You gonna build me a new courthouse?
Actually, they don't have the authority to request to build a new courthouse according to the law that the county administrator sent today.
So I, I know what's happened in other counties.
I don't know what's happened. It's been a while since I've been in one in Henry County, but it was nothing like that last time I was in there. You, you might have had the one point of entry, but you went in it. You went up to a desk and told them where you was going, if you was going to court or you going to whatever. Then they run you through a metal detector, and you went on. I didn't see all this other fanciness.
And sir, I'm just, you know, I feel like when a judge comes to me and asks me for this, I feel like it is my job to bring it to y'all.
And that's fine.
If y'all don't want to approve it, then like I said, we, I execute the board's wishes. I'm just explaining to me her concern, or sorry, explaining to you her concern and her request.
Well, I, I'm, what, what I'm saying is we're meeting the requirement for the third floor. That's correct, Sheriff, right?
Yes, this floor is considered corporate, basically, because that's, that's the reason why she requested, um, two years ago, three years ago, that we have a deputy up here every day, you know, because the clerks on both district and juvenile masterfulations court clerks are here forty hours a week. Just like Circuit Court, we have a deputy full-time up there. You cannot get to, into the court complex, which is the third floor here, without going through a metal detector and deputy. State law, uh, can, does require that courthouses have specific security that doesn't apply to, to other government entities, but it does apply to courthouses. And we are meeting the compliance on the third floor.
And I mean, if you go back to the judge and say, look, you know, we have made the determination that we meet the requirements of the law according to the law for the third floor, which is the courtroom. Um, this entire building is not the courthouse. It's just this floor. And if we're meeting that requirement, I, I don't think that we need to expend funds any further.
So should I remove that item from the budget and leave it?
I think it's still being debated enough that it should probably stay on there, because we have several more budget.
I think the judge should have some input as well.
The judge has already had input.
Right, but we're not getting that perspective. She hasn't spoken to me, so I don't have the direction perspective of what she wants.
Well, you can want a lot of things, but the judge does not make the determination for the entire complex. They make the requirement for their facility, which is the third floor.
She still deserves the consideration and courtesy of being heard.
She's gotten that. She wrote her letter.
Not for me. I have a two-page letter in your book, in your pocketbook here.
Yep. Haven't heard a response from her to what you're saying now. I'd like to hear that from her. You need the whole conversation out, Harv.
Anything else?
Um, the zero-turn mower for Parkson Rec. Can they get a couple more bids for that, just to see? I think they had one for fifteen thousand dollars, just to see how much. I mean, obviously, I don't want to buy the big lots lawnmower, but.
Well, I think I said last time, Tractor Supply's got a Bad Boy mower that's a real good mower. And I heard they've come out with a steel, you know how good all the steel stuff is? I've heard they've come out with a steel mower now, and Woods Coal Stories, I think sells them. You know, those places, those places pay taxes in Patrick County.
Okay.
My only concern with getting something like from Tractor Supply is if it has a major issue, there's no certified person.
Bad Boy, Bad Boy's a separate mower. I've had one for five years, and it's about the toughest thing I've ever got a hold of.
And Bad Boys are really good mowers, if they were. And, and you can get obstructed decks, but the, the ones with the punch metal decks now are not that good. They're all motor model, and they'll wear out real quick. But if you get a fabricated deck, I agree with you.
Yeah, they, they, I looked at one the other day, the Elite.
Welded, yeah.
Welded, probably forty, forty-four years, I guess.
Yeah, I don't like it. Because beyond that, it's just a transmission and engine. Those can be repaired and replaced easily. But you want a, you want a sturdy machine.
Yeah, they, they're, they're pretty dear.
Okay. Anything else we need to talk about?
Probably a whole lot more.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So do we come up with a final decision about the A-Rat dam mowing options? Obviously, it looks like contracting out is not an option.
My understanding is the Ventrac is designed for extreme terrain, from hills through swamp. It's a machine I've been drooling over for twenty-some years.
We'll probably keep on drooling.
Couldn't afford it. And I don't want to see anybody getting hurt operating equipment that's not designed for that.
We got a little more time. Why don't you check some more on the contract, and you just got two-part price it in you.
Yeah, we requested a third and haven't received it. I can get Robbie to go back.
Now, there are other slope mowers out there as well.
Well, if we can get a.
So they're literally called slope mowers, so if you could research that.
The one benefit of a contract price is you don't have employees, and you're not paying the insurance and workman's comp, retirement system, and all that stuff.
Twenty-three thousand a year.
Yeah, I'd say get some more prices.
You can buy that Ventrac real quick.
I might want to reach out that thing.
But why don't we, why don't we look into some other slope mowers and see what they have that might be compatible or maybe a little? I mean, the Ventrac is like the Lincoln Continental of the, of the slope mowers.
Well, Steve said a while ago, that track mower, they've got a track, whatever you call that thing, mini excavator with the bush hog boom on it. It's been doing it since twenty-fifteen.
Yeah, by putting the blade down and holding themselves, and that tells me right there it's not designed for that.
Uh, Mr. Castle, did you find out anything about an ambulance maybe cheaper than what you told us by any chance?
They are still working on the quotes to get back to me.
Okay.
I met with them, and they're going back to try to sharpen the pencils off.
Okay.
I, I forgot about that one, but, uh, they had one of these new van type down.
The Transit.
Yep, Stewart. No, not for Transit, not for Transit. We went down there and looked at it, sir. You didn't show up.
I, I've seen it.
Yeah, but it's, it's got, it's set up good. I was really surprised. You wouldn't have to let yours set up and run for three or four hours or all night, because the temperature's cold. They got a, a heat pump in them. It works off a one-ten cord. Working on the patience, you got one really nice seat, a lot better than these, sitting there on the side where you can do your CPR and everything. They've got another seat at the head that's really comfortable, swivels around where you can work on the head or oxygen or whatever you need to. And it's got all-wheel drive. Uh, it's got, already got the striker system where you load the stretcher up in it. I mean, I was impressed. And it's a Ford. They got a gas engine, EcoBoost or something. He said we get around fifteen to seventeen miles a gallon, and I, I know those Fords won't do that up there now. I, I was impressed, but, and it's a hundred and fifty-nine thousand versus four-hundred thousand.
What time we add our equipment to the truck? We won't have enough of the care equipment.
Well, you.
We carry air packs, uh, turnip gear. With the Transit, we couldn't even put our Lucas on there.
Well, what we were thinking, what we were thinking, though, you can do a lot of transport, but mostly like that nursing home down there. And, and if you could rotate out, if you got another, another two of good ones, you could kind of rotate your, your calls and maybe make it work in that way.
The only problem is a routing transport, turning the code in a heartbeat.
Well, it'll.
We can even access the.
It'll handle the code. It'll handle the code. It doesn't want to handle firefighting equipment and all that matter.
Yeah.
Well, and we had suggested another option of trying to rent a unit from one of the other stations within the county that may have one that's just sitting around. Um, you know, I think we need to explore that option as opposed to allocating the money to purchase another one. Mind you, you know, we talked to the guy over there the other day. It's gonna be eighteen months to two years before we can even get one. So, um, I, I think we need to look at alternative options.
We're also looking at demos, remounts. We may not look at every option out there right now. Okay.
Good. We appreciate that. Thank you.
We're even looking at grants. Hopefully, we will find out Thursday if they're gonna make funds for them. Uh, we'll, I'll wait and see.
Anything else we need to discuss about the capital request?
I'm, I'm concerned about that courthouse court, but just look at it. I know you want to go put hands on it.
Yeah.
But just looking at those pictures, that really worries me about a fall trip and fallout. I don't know who would be liable to courts or else, but either way, you don't want somebody getting hurt. I don't know if there's a solution to that, but it's a pain in the throat. Yeah, you might, you might throw a kicker, kicker on it, rip it right in half and stuff.
I was hoping for that courthouse grant to pay for all that.
Anything else under the capital request list that's up there that we want to talk about? Or any other things in the budget that we want to pull out and talk about?
Uh, you know, I think that for some of these things that we're putting off, I think we can put a moderate amount into the budget for the future, but it not necessarily be something that we're going to fully fund this year.
I agree.
You know, if we're going, let's say, you know, let's put ten thousand dollars for the carpet fund for the, the courthouse. Um, let's go ahead and allocate ten thousand dollars for the flooring for the community center. Um, I, I don't mind putting some money in there, but I don't think that we need to necessarily plan on paying everything upfront in, in the next year. But I, I fully support planning ahead.
Absolutely.
And putting at least a little bit of money in there, so that we've got something to work with next year.
And the scales at the transfer station, is it possible they would make it another year, or is it?
I can answer.
So what I can tell you about the scales, sir, is in October, the company that we come to have comes at the service. They break the seal, they service them. In the meantime, the state came back in a certified. Company called, said they're gonna shut down your scales because they're no good, they're old. I said, well, you can't shut down the scales. You can fix scales. You don't shut them down. They said, basically held it overhead, we're gonna tell the state. I said, well, you can call the state, I'll give you the number, because they put the sticker on them. They're fine. So we turned around, Scotty, uh, helped myself, and we called two companies to come in. They gave us a quote of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to redo the scales. Um, I just thought that was horrible, you know, and I told the company that currently services the scales. I'll do everything I can to make sure you don't work here anymore, because that's ridiculous. And, um, we got two quotes that came in at forty thousand or forty-four upon shore. To answer your question, the scales, I mean, honestly, right? They exceeded their shelf life. They may last another one, two, three, five years. We don't know that, right? We really don't. And I wish I had a scientific answer for you. I don't. I know that if we plan, and maybe stuff like Mr. Overby said, you know, to move out smartly, if we plan, that would be advantageous to the citizens of Patrick County. Because if those scales break, right, then we're calling the company to come in. We're telling the company, okay, we need your help. When the scales are broken, by the time they come off, they've set it up, they get parts. We may shut down, you know, wave at the wave station for, you know, roughly two weeks. If we planned it properly, and we said, okay, we're going to do the scales, you know, then we know that we can order the parts, we can have them ship them in. We don't have to tear up any of our concrete. We're gonna use all the same concrete again. The other company tried to tell us we needed concrete. We don't. So do we need scales? I mean, honest to be, it's a lot of monitoring, because that's not my job, right? You dictate policy, we execute it. Um, I would hate to see the scales go down for the simple fact that the citizens of the county, we, we, we lose the wave capacity of this transfer station probably for at least two weeks by the time we get the parts, pull the concrete up. If it's something planned, then, you know, we can, we can, um, look at the time. So I'm sure that maybe, sir, didn't answer your question, but I, I just couldn't go on record and tell you those scales, they may be dead tomorrow. And I might be dead in the morning.
Now, we don't know.
That's true.
We don't know, but, but now, a little bit of experience, like Boxley or Asphalt Plant, APAC, WNL, Piedmont, the state comes in every so often and certifies those. And if they're off just a little bit or something, they don't shut production down. They, they tell you to get them fixed. And most of the time, the company that comes in fixes them pretty quick. But now, I could get you the information on the companies. But they come in really quick.
This Lord might be able to help us. I think we've probably gone off the top of my head. Don't quote me on this. I can get you the exact numbers for it. I think we've got about five thousand dollars maintenance in this year, in the last twelve months, because they have to come in, they have to break them.
You're gonna have to maintain anything.
They have to come in and stick that magic sticker on the circle. So that would be the other thing, you know, if, if we're spending five, six thousand dollars a year, which I believe we are, just to repair and maintain them, we could wait for thirty-three. And again, you know, a lot of supervisory, you don't, you don't ask people.
Well, if, if we had two-point-one, two-point-four million dollars in the green instead of two-point-four in the red, we wouldn't be so tight. Has that got any better?
I will say, though.
The only feedback we got was to cut a two-thousand-dollar contribution and to cut the library's increase from five percent to three percent. That's the only cuts we've made from what last work session. So if y'all have any other feedback, we're happy to.
I believe Mr. Clayton and Mr. Overby were talking about actually giving that two thousand dollars to that other fellow.
No.
No?
No, no. I got chewed out that night about that, promoting the other fella's business. But we took it back, what we did to the Senate Asylum. You're wrong on that one. You, you were sick that night. I know you was that sick.
Sir, can I say something, Matt, just for a second? I've been here six months, and I told everybody I was playing chess for six months. And I'd be a good boy and be quiet. I have. I've learned who I can trust, who I can't trust, who helps me and who my enemies are. So now I'm going to speak with the way that U G M, and I'm abrasive. I can promise you, on a lot of those things that my name is on, your employees, regardless of what sometimes ruler has it, they do turn over every rock. You know, they didn't just take that scale and handed you a receipt for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to redo it. We fought for that. We had a company come from Ohio. So when we hand you these things, and, and lots of times our citizens don't get to see it firsthand, a lot of people have their hands on there, and they're just as responsible financially, and they take it like it's their own money. You know, no one's trying to just put scales, and we realize that, you know, but that's not our decision. So we do the best we can. We crunch the numbers the best we can. We give it to you all. That's what you all, the leaders of the county, for. And we dictate the policy and execute. So I can tell you, you know, Mr. Kendrick, you know, we talked about the scales or the mowers. We're well aware of where the county is in money, but I have to be able to present to you, and I am very comfortable in telling you the employees that I've been blessed and entrusted with by Ms. Bette, they do a damn good job. They do the best they can to give you the best they got. And, and there's no fluff, if you will. If there was fluff, I'd tell you, there really isn't. And I'm sorry, I suppose. And I'm sorry I sort of got tired, but like I said, I hit my six-month mark last week. I don't have to say it. I'm just going to tell you the way it is.
That's the way I'd rather hear it.
So I had requested at the last meeting, rolls up cell phones, landlines, internet service, vehicle expenses, information technology, fuel, phones. Has that been put together for me?
The summer, sorry.
There's some of the expenses?
Yeah.
That I was due to you before you sent it to the board?
I must have missed it. Did you email it to me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I couldn't.
I apologize. I must have missed it and forgot to. Sorry.
I didn't check. My fault for that.
As far as the.
Turn around.
Thank you. As far as the Patrick promise, $110,000, can you go back to Mr. Hodges and find out what the actual amount is that we need to appropriate now? Because I know that they've got a contribution from the schools, they've got a contribution through EDA. What is the actual total that we need to put forth? Because it's not the $110,000 now.
Okay. And that's to, I think, the 110, I know it's, was that to secure it for the first year? Is that what?
I thought that was the first three.
To launch it. So what do they need to launch it?
Yeah. Is that all that you had in the presentation? So we'll turn the lights back on.
Yes.
I had a question about for county administration. Is the grant writer position still going to be 40% funded by the schools?
As far as we know.
Because I had heard rumors that that is no longer going to be funded by the schools. I just want to make sure. You can find that out for me.
Well, when I spoke to the superintendent last week, he assured me it was in their budget.
Okay. What else do we have that we want to talk budget related? So as far as tonight, I think we have mixed the community building carpet, correct? Is everybody in agreement with that? We're still looking at the security updates if need be. I would like another bid or two from Parks and Rec for their mower. What else? Because we've got a whole lot more that's going to come out of there.
Good, now there's, you're doing one of the full board. I ain't heard you speak yet. I hold my counsel. But we ain't got much longer to hold if we're going to have the same flu in April. And then when I do, you'll complain that I do.
For the financial advisor that was listed under auditor financial services, $15,000, what does that entail?
What is that? I couldn't hear you.
On page 10, on page 10, auditor financial services, there's a request for $15,000. What does that entail? Financial advisor.
So last year, Davenport, and I know Patrick County's worked with Davenport for, I don't know, decades, I guess, but they came in last year and, you know, gave a financial analysis of the county and offered to, and I know the board has mentioned, putting some financial policies in place. So they would work with the board to craft financial policies specifically for Patrick County when it comes to reserve funds, capital funds, you know, contributions, whatever kind of policies. I mean, there's a limit because they gave us a quote of $15,000, but that's what that is. Anything else?
Are these not things that we can take a stab at on our own?
If y'all, we can look at like government finance websites and such. The one thing that Davenport, as the county's financial advisor, is able to do is they're able to come in and ask y'all, okay, do you have any planned capital investments? You know, they can look at our debt, things like that, so they can really craft strategies that are specific to Patrick County's current, you know, financial status in 2025 and, you know, plan the future. But that's really up to the board, you know, they're your policies, so.
I just think that before we go spending money, I think we should take advantage of our employees and let them take a stab at these policies.
Is that something y'all would like to remove from the budget or leave in?
I think we can remove it. And then if we get into a position that, you know, we don't have faith in our own policies, then we can go outside. But I think we should let our employees take a stab at it.
Lay the groundwork first and then if we need that second step, then next year we could look at.
We're not the only locality in Virginia that has, that needs financial policies, I'm sure. And every, every county has financial policies and I think most counties would be more than welcome, more than happy to share. And, you know, there's several counties throughout the state that are similar size and complexity of ours that I think that we could get those policies from if we absolutely needed to. Is there a problem with the drinking water? I'm just wondering why we have so much drinking water expenses. I mean, in this month's bills and appropriations, it looked like we were paying somewhere around $600 for drinking water. Is our drinking water not good? We use town water, don't we?
Well, I mean, not all of our facilities. I mean, at the, I would say the transfer station and animal shelter specifically would need, right? Or something like that? Yes.
I mean, we're providing water at the community center, we're providing water for the jail. I mean, that's what I'm asking, is there a problem with our water that we need to provide?
That would be.
Bottle drinking water?
I mean, that was the water, you know, most of our offices, we don't have any type of kitchenette here, you know, we have to wash our dishes in the bathroom sink. So, I mean, when I came in, you know, at least a water cooler was provided in offices, but that's up to the board to decide. Y'all want to continue that?
I think that's just something that we could cut out. We've got water fountains.
Let them eat cake.
I would support it in situations like where we're using well water at the animal shelter, the transfer station. That may not be the best water, but, you know, when we're, when we're hooked up to town water, we pay a fortune in town water, we, I don't know why we can't drink it.
So delete water coolers for offices that are connected to town water?
Yes.
Is that the direction of the board?
Can you talk a little bit about the, how the salaries are paid for within the DMV?
So.
From the documents that I saw, it looked like there was a steep increase in salaries.
Yeah, the DMV is a very demanding job and, you know, in the salary study we did last year and just the amount of work that those women do, they rarely take their breaks if ever. You know, we just felt, you know, not we felt, but based on the requirements of that job, the salaries that were in place before, we just believe were not equitable across local government.
And you also went from one and a half people to two full-time people.
I'll get into individual salaries when we get into closed session, but that's just something that I had a concern about. You know, we, we've got a lot of people in this county that's not getting paid increases in their own jobs and I think that we need to.
So some salary increases went into place last year. So last year, we got our lowest paid employees. We made sure we got all of them up to at least above $15 an hour and some more than that. And we had some that were $20,000 off from, you know, a colleague. And so we tackled the big ones last year. And then this year, we, you know, we tried to tackle kind of phase two. So there's not an exact science to it. It's, you know, we're trying to do, looking at, once again, you know, responsibilities of the job, comparison to similar jobs. And so if you see increases for some and not others than that, why?
And DMV's revenue pretty much covers their, or pretty close covers their budget. So there's two people bringing in those revenues, or two and a half people.
Two people.
Two people.
And the idea was to phase in equitable pay over a period of time. And that was started, I think, before I came onto board.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, we had an uproar from the citizens last year because we had people getting 19% pay increases and here we are again and we've got, still got people getting 19% pay increases. And that's a whole lot to justify when we're in a budget deficit. And I think we need to, quite personally, I think that we need to freeze pay for anybody over, making over $50,000. At least for a period of time until we can, you know, get our hands more around some things that are going on here. Because, you know, people straight up cannot afford additional taxes and if we don't get this down, we're going to have to raise some sorts of taxes. And I don't want to have to do that. I know it's a fact of life that, you know, there's two things, certain death and taxes, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're asking people to pay more. And, you know, plain and simply, people just don't have it. And, you know, I, I think that we, we're not doing our citizens a service by telling them it's okay because somebody thinks that they don't get paid enough, so they're going to get a 19% pay increase.
And that's not, we don't take that into consideration. I don't take, if somebody comes to me and said, hey, I don't think I make enough, that's not a reasoning, they don't even, to be honest, they probably don't even know that's in the budget.
Well, I mean, if, if we're not at risk of losing that person, then why do we need to give them a pay raise? I mean.
I'm sorry. You know, last year when we did the salary search, when I presented to the board to go out and do a salary study, I explained that we wanted to do it for equity reasons. So that's, that's the reason that we.
Well, and the same thing, you know, with giving across the board 3% pay increase, just because the comp board gives a 3% pay increase doesn't mean we have to give that to everybody. And it also doesn't mean that if we're paying above comp board rates, that we need to provide that 3%. That 3% can go back into reimbursing the county for those positions that are being paid above comp board prices. You know, I just don't, I'm not supportive of giving across the board pay increases that reward people that make more money just because they make more money. And then the lower end employees may only be getting $300 or $400 a year.
So is there any action on that?
I don't think so. I'm inclined to agree with him. I told you last year, you know, you take 3% on $100,000 is $3,000. 3% on $31,000 is $900. That's a whole lot of difference. Did his co-system do something about that a few years ago, some kind of, like a stiff increase or something? The gap, if you get a straight across the bill, the gap just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
Well, and that's why, you know, every few years now, local governments are doing these pay studies to catch those inequities.
But that ain't.
You know, we're kind of following the guidance of the state on that. They, you know, they are doing the 3% COLA, so that's why we've kind of used that, just because it's.
That's not doing exactly what, what Andrew was talking about, Lou. You probably need to have a threshold over a certain.
What you want is a regressive rate, it's like a regressive tax. The more you make, the less you, your return is.
I would question how attractive that is to employees, current and future.
Sure, it ain't going to be attractive to them and it ain't nothing attractive to me, you know, and we didn't get, I told you the other day, social security didn't get but 2.5. We didn't get no 18, 19, or whatever to bring us up.
I guess what I'm saying, and if I hire an employee at $55,000 and they know they can never make more than that, I mean, I just.
Well, do we have a pay scale for the county, county employees at all?
We have a pay range scale.
Okay, I'd like to see a copy of that, please. For every position in the county.
His co-system the same way. You take a bus driver or a janitor or kitchen worker and they make at least pay you of anybody in the whole system. They do some of the worst work that some of the ones making a lot of money wouldn't do. I guess year of the lowest pay is probably going to be like a janitor, maintenance, DMV, stuff like that. And they have got their hands full.
And that's why we did their salary adjustment last year.
The turnover rate in DMV is high. It's really high.
We lost a considerable amount of scale, sales in that turnover.
And when that turnover happens, the person that's trained is no longer trained anymore. And then we have lots of angry people because there's a line to the other door.
Then we lose those revenues until they get trained.
So would anybody on the board be in favor of just saying, go back to the departments and cut out 1%?
Well, we'd get tongue-tied. At one time with a Berkeley group, I think I've said that before, he said, look at your budget, look at your deficit, figure out what percentage it would take to bring it up, send it back to the departments and tell each department to cut whatever that percentage is. And those not have to sit here all these hours.
Because we guys are going to say, we can sit here and nitpick, you know, nickel and dime stuff, but it's going to.
And I would also make a suggestion, for instance, with helping to project costs. Instead of reimbursing individual meals, wouldn't it make more sense for us to just project what the per diem is for that travel and just reimburse the per diem and be done with it? And then we wouldn't have to worry about receipts?
Per audit, we have to have, for reimbursement, we have to have receipts.
You don't have to have a receipt to reimburse for per diem. You can just say that we're going to, we're going to reimburse at the per diem rate set by GSA, period.
I would assume we're probably going to be better off financially if we do, if we do require receipts. Because if we give, I mean, I know, you know, I don't use a per diem here really, but in previous jobs, I rarely use my max per diem, rarely. So if we just tell everybody, hey, you get to use the max per diem, I would assume that's going to make our costs go up.
But it makes it a whole lot easier to project because you know exactly what it's going to be. If you've got a conference in Richmond, you know what that per diem is going to cost.
And we ask our department heads to, you know, if they're going to be gone for two nights, we, you know, we kind of project that.
So it'd be easier to.
We don't just pull these numbers out of, and we look at historical data too. You know, if you go to the same conference every year, you know what that price is going to, cost is going to be associated.
I just think it would be a whole lot easier just to reimburse the per diem and be done with it. I mean, every job that I've had in the last 25 years, that's the way it's been done. You always go by the GSA or set rates, whether that's the federal government, private industry, you know, it's just a set standard across the board.
Okay. Yeah, we can ask the auditors about that.
I personally want to be able to see the receipts. I don't want to pay somebody to take a vacation on a county dime. I want to know what they're doing.
Yet we don't want to get down in the weeds, but we want to see the receipts on exactly what they bought at Taco Bell. I mean, I just don't see where it makes sense. It'd be a whole lot less work on our people and a whole lot easier to calculate.
Yeah, it'd be easier to reject the higher costs.
If you just reimburse.
That's exactly what it's going to be, is higher costs.
So anything else with the budget tonight that we need to look at?
I'd also like to see a roll-up on what we pay for dues and memberships for different positions throughout the county. Again, being in the federal government, I've never been reimbursed for, you know, a membership to a professional organization or anything like that. So I'd like to see what the total is and that may be something to potentially cut.
So back to Mr. Clayton, Mr. Hendricks said something about going back to the departments and asking for them to, so looking at, so you want us to calculate the difference, see what that percentage is and ask them to go back and cut that out of their operating budget?
Well, that was an idea from Berkeley, that's what they told us about a year ago, I guess, in one of the meetings we had with them. They said, they said the board shouldn't have to sit here and do that. And yet they don't most places. Henry County.
Mr. Kendrick, the reason that we're doing it this way this year is. Mr. Kendrick, the reason that we're doing it this way this year is because y'all voted to have the full board as the budget committee, and I was told that the budget committee wanted to be more involved.
I voted no, because it worked really good before.
Well, I apologize, but I have to go by what the majority decides.
But not the full board. Before, we had it down pretty good. I think last year, year before, when we cut a million and a half dollars at the first budget meeting, and it wasn't out of social security.
Yes, correct.
First meeting, and we ain't cut, let's just go out this way so far, are we gonna get done by April?
That's up to y'all.
For the volunteer fire departments, they're requesting an increase of $16,000 for the capital equipment contribution. Is there a justification for that increase?
So there were three different requests between rescue squads and fire departments. I think I wrote that down, actually. I would assume they would say just the cost of equipment has went up. Scotty?
Yes. Just from last year, this year, the cost of ambulance, I was pretty sure last year, went up a 1.5, went up over $100,000. A stripped-down, nothing on it engine, costs you a half a million dollars now. That's just a truck with a bump on the top of it. As I'm quicker goes on, every ambulance, Henry County, fast rescue, just ordered a wrong ambulance, cost them $465,000, that's nothing on it. The public safety, they use, they say, during the 400-plus range, so literally, the 400s that we got wasn't good to hit start with, but I said, we are looking at other options for that, but the cost of equipment, that, no, no fire department in Patrick County can afford to buy a brand-new fire truck right now. They don't have the money.
And not to mention, diesel fuel has skyrocketed.
Yes, cost of tires.
Insurance, the electricity.
What we give them, again, their annual contribution just covers their, their insurance for their vehicles.
So last year, the board did provide a 50% increase to contributions for fire and rescue. This year, fire came back and requested an increase to capital and department contributions, and volunteer rescue requested an increase to capital contributions.
And those have been increased in almost four years, I think, somewhere around there, there were two, 15 years, I think, had been increased from there.
They got skipped two years.
Yeah.
I think that just continues to justify why we need to continue to pursue as many grant opportunities as possible. We need to continue to pursue as many grant opportunities as possible.
Mr. Overe, were you suggesting level funding for fire and EMS, or from last year?
I think it's something that we need to consider. I'm not ready to say that we need to do it quite yet, but I think it's something that we need to consider. Are all the volunteer rescue squads doing soft billing now?
Yes, sir. And every time, every time I see Senator Warner anywhere, and ask him about stuff to help fire departments, and EMS, and all this, that, and the other, him or his aide one says, "There's plenty of federal money you gotta ask for it." How do you do that?
Well, I think a lot of that's probably up in the air right now anyways.
Well, right now, probably is, but it's been about a year or so since I saw it. I don't know, I think I got only one identity, fire department one, but there's a whole kind of federal money you just gotta ask for.
So, Ms. Jones, I think what Mr. Kendrick was asking for earlier is exactly what percentage would have to come off in order for everything to break even. You probably can't give that right now, or if you can't, you know...
And is the plan to fund whatever capital, whatever capital projects we have with reserves from our savings that we put in contingency fund and beyond, which is what we did for this fiscal year?
That's not what we asked, though. We asked how much percentage each department have to cut to make a balanced budget.
It's gonna make a huge difference. I need to know how much more revenue I'm bringing in from reserves, if any, to fund that, or you're doing it all from operating?
Well, I think we talked about trying not to get into those reserves if we could help it. I think Doug might have mentioned something about using that interest of it, but...
And that interest is already in the general fund revenue.
So it's already in it.
And kind of what I was bringing up, too, so if the recommendation is, is it 20%?
It's a kind of a figuring.
Yeah, so anything above 20%, can we take that and put that into like the capital stuff, which will reduce the difference that we need to make up, which will reduce how much the departments would have to...
I think we should stick to that 20% cap and move the remainder into capital projects.
I think so, too, because it's, while we sit on, taxpayers are paying, and to what? For us to sit on money for what?
I mean, that's what the money's there for.
That's right.
I think as long as we keep a 20% reserve, you know, that, that keeps us safe.
What do we have, 22%?
24 or something like that.
It was around 24.
I think it was 24, 24. something.
It seems like 20%.
16 to something, 16.67, I think it was.
Yeah, to 20.
That's the breaking point.
Now, do you want me to isolate those expenditures that are being paid with comp board funds for employee benefits and such that stays, separate that out, because that's...
You're getting above our head now.
Yeah, and then contributions as well, do we, do we remove contributions from that?
I think we have to remove contributions. I think we have an understanding of using the reserves over 20% to cover some of that, and that's what a lot of that fund is for, you know, is for major...
I don't want it to fund regular day-to-day operating expenses.
That's what I did last year about having to pull it out to pay a bill, but if it's an actual...
Yeah, we can use it to fund capital.
Yeah, and that's what it should be used for. It's kind of like taking out of your, you know, savings account to pay your credit card.
No, it's common to use that for budget stabilization and tax rate stabilization. It's a very common use for it, and I think it's a...
So, Ms. Jones, I think to answer your question just then, was a couple options. Whatever you think, you're the finance person, you, you know more about finance than I assume anybody sitting at this table up here, so...
And I will say, when we're happy to do this, I will say, I asked a couple department heads after the board retreat, if there was anything they could cut out of their operating budget. Quite a few of them said, "Yeah, I'll cut it, and then I'm gonna have to come back to you in six months to have the paper to print tax tickets."
The only thing it gets me is every month, and it gets me confused trying to figure it out, but just about every month, different departments will cut something out of one line item and move it down to something else. Well, if they can afford to cut it now out of that one, why didn't they have to cut it before the budget?
Well, it's something like with maintenance this year, you know, we had some unexpected, you know, and we, you know, I try to work, I know especially with the department heads that report to me, try to tighten that up, to make sure we're not going in between line items, but, you know, as you saw in the audit, you know, we stay within our parameters, you know, there's nothing, you know, and we'll continue to try to, to better forecast those. We've had a lot of staff turnover, so it's gonna take some time maybe for people to get their head wrapped around what they need, and one line item versus the next.
But every month, you see a lot of that.
It's gonna be more through the end of the fiscal year because we're getting to the end now.
Anything else on the budget?
So can I review what we have, just to make sure we don't miss anything?
Please, please.
So go back to Patrick County Education Foundation and ask what they need to launch the Patrick Promise, delete the $15,000 for Davenport advising on financial policies. Do we delete water cooler usage for any offices that get town water? And bring kind of a summary or such of dues and memberships. I know there was some other discussion, did I miss any other action items?
Anything that's left off? Okay, we'll go with that. Okay, with that being said, then, we'll go ahead and move on to our reports. The administrators' report.
I don't have anything additional.
Okay, thank you. Supervisors' report, Mr. Marshall.
Yep, bear with me, because I'm gonna be long-winded this evening.
Okay.
All right. On February 12th, I attended the town and Stewart council meeting. Mr. Bob Pittis was chosen by the council to fill the seat vacated by Terry Dalton, who assumed the role of mayor. Congratulations to Bob. I look forward to sitting in on your meetings, a witness of the contributions you will make to your community. On February 13th, I attended the school board meeting where budgetary discussions took place. I was surprised that despite the widespread rhetoric and claims about the school budget and budget process over the past year, only two people other than myself attended specifically to hear about the school budget. External budgets such as those for the school and the sheriff's department are important to pay attention to. While these and other entities operate as their own authorities, it is the board of supervisors that disperses the tax dollars funding them. It is crucial for both the board of supervisors and the public to educate themselves as much as possible about these budgets. If past experience is any indicator, there will likely be many erroneous claims of corruption judging by the low attendance of budget discussions. These claims will likely be as ignorantly inflammatory and just as inaccurate as they were last year. Do better, folks. On February 14th, I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Harvest House Temporium. They offer a variety of treats including baked goods, chocolates, fudge, coffees, and drinks. Additionally, they feature an impressive selection of locally crafted artwork for sale. Be sure to stop by and visit them at 131 North Main Street in Stewart. It is always a good thing to support local small business. On February 26th, I attended the community policy and management team meeting and the Economic Development Authority meeting later that evening. On February 27th, I attended the West Piedmont Planning District Commission meeting. This body can be very important for Patrick County, assuming that we receive adequate advocacy from our board members serving on the commission. I will be attending more of these meetings for my own edification and to see if I can learn anything that will benefit Patrick County. On Monday, March 3rd, I was very privileged to be invited to read to three different Head Start classrooms as part of Read Across America Week. Read Across America Week is held annually in celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday. This is a nationwide initiative to promote literacy and a love of reading among children. Schools, libraries, and community organizations participate by hosting events, inviting guest readers, and engaging students in activities that celebrate the joy of books. It was an honor to participate in this meaningful tradition by reading to the children, sharing stories that inspire imagination and fostering a lifelong passion for learning. Now, I got a report on support of the access control system budget lineup. Access control in our county buildings, particularly in the administration building, is not just a budgetary decision, it is a moral and ethical one. Let's be very clear, the request for enhanced security did not materialize out of thin air. It came in direct response to a growing culture of aggression and hostility that has been encouraged and allowed to fester within our county. A culture that I regret to say has been fueled in part by the actions and rhetoric of some of my fellow elected officials. We have reached a point where the county staff, the very people who keep this government running, feel unsafe in their workplace. They have been subjected to unannounced intrusions, aggressive confrontations, and an overall climate of fear. This is unacceptable. And yet, when these staff members who are simply trying to do their jobs request basic security measures to protect themselves, they are met with opposition from those, some of the same individuals who have contributed to the current toxic environment. Let me fill you in on a conversation I had just last month with one of my fellow supervisors. I raised concerns about their encouragement on Facebook of aggressive behavior on social media, particularly in relation to a baseless and failed attempt to portray me as having sexually harassed someone. This is the second time they tried to, someone tried to portray that. Their response was a smile and a shrug as if to say, "Oh, well, too bad." This dismissive attitude toward potential consequences of their actions is emblematic of a much broader problem. When elected officials, those entrusted with the responsibility of leading this county, feed and encourage aggressive rhetoric and actions, including towards staff, why should we be surprised when aggression escalates? Why should we be shocked when staff feel threatened, and why would we oppose the very security measures that are at least in part necessitated by our own behavior? The access control system we are discussing in the budget is not some extravagant expense. It is a necessary investment in the safety of our employees and the public. It could provide a single monitor point of entry, updated security cameras, and the ability to lock down a building in case of emergency. The sad reality is that it has become necessary to protect our staff from human-based hazard. Don't forget that this building houses not only county offices, but also general district and juvenile and domestic relation courts. It is a hub of critical government functions, and yet it remains alarmingly vulnerable. Multiple unmonitored points of entry and no way to enforce firearm restrictions, even if we had them, and we should in this building. As things stand, we are in dereliction of our duty to protect those who serve this community on a day-to-day basis. To those who oppose this measure, I ask you, what message are you sending to our staff? That their safety is not a priority? That the aggression they face is acceptable? That the very security measures important necessitated by your own actions are somehow unnecessary? This is not just about money, it is about accountability, and it's about recognizing that words and actions have consequences. We have a responsibility to mitigate harm, especially harm that we as a board may have helped create. This is about standing up for the people who work hard to serve this county, even in the face of open hostility and intimidation. And it's not just about supporting staff, it's also about holding everyone, including my fellow supervisors, accountable for creating a safe and respectful work environment. Opposing this item would be hypocritical, and any rhetoric to the contrary would be disingenuous. Let me be clear, this is not a question of whether the access control system is a good idea. It is. The question is whether we are willing to prioritize it. If financial constraints are the issue, let's say so honestly, work to address them, rather than dismissing the program as unnecessary or ill-conceived. Let's do the right thing. I urge each of you to put aside your personal agendas and prioritize the safety and well-being of our staff. I got another one here. Subject: Using the unreserved fund balance for budget and tax rate stabilization. As we navigate the county's budget cycle and financial planning, I advocate for the responsible use of our unreserved fund balance to stabilize the budget and mitigate the need for tax rate increases. This approach is best practice and a prudent way to manage expenses during uncertain times, such as the current inflationary pressures and fluctuating revenues. The unreserved fund balance represents savings not earmarked for specific purposes and serves as a financial cushion for the county. It can be used for budget and tax rate stabilization, a widely accepted practice when facing fiscal challenges. Until the real estate reassessment cycle is complete, we lack complete revenue information going forward, creating uncertainty in budget, budget planning, and outlook. Using the fund balance allows us to avoid unnecessary tax increases, maintain essential services, and preserve fiscal flexibility for true emergencies. This aligns with best practices, as many local governments use unreserved fund balances within state-recommended limits to ensure stability during uncertain periods. This is not a long-term solution, but a necessary step to bridge the gap until reassessments are finalized, and we can make more informed decisions about future budgets, tax rates, and resource allocations. Reactive measures such as slashing services, cutting jobs, or reducing employee pay are detrimental to the community and counterproductive in the long term. These actions erode public trust, harm employee morale, and weaken the county's ability to deliver essential services. Similarly, deferring infrastructure maintenance, a past practice that has created challenges in our current budget cycle, leads to higher costs down the line and undermines long-term financial stability. Instead, using the unreserved fund balance strategically allows us to stabilize the budget while maintaining services without weakening our maintenance or contingency funds, thus ensuring resilience for future challenges. For over six months now, I have advocated for a formal unreserved fund balance policy to enhance fiscal transparency, accountability, and resilience. Such a policy would provide clear guidelines for using the fund balance, align with state recommendations, and build public trust. Let's direct the administration to propose a policy conforming to state guidelines and incorporating board input. By allocating a portion of the fund balance within recommended limits, we can address immediate needs while preserving resources for future uncertainties. This balanced approach upholds fiscal responsibility and ensures the county remains prepared for the challenges ahead. As we face these ongoing fiscal challenges, it is crucial that we act decisively and as a team to ensure the county's financial stability. By adopting a formal unreserved fund balance policy and using this resource responsibly, we can demonstrate our commitment of sound financial management and long-term planning. I urge my fellow supervisors to join me in supporting this approach, which not only addresses immediate needs, but also strengthens our ability to serve the community effectively going forward. Let's work together to balance this budget, finalize this policy, and ensure the county remains on a path of fiscal resilience and accountability. Now, finally, I have heard concerns raised about my attendance at committee meetings... Now, finally, I have heard concerns raised about my attendance at committee meetings, where I'm not formally assigned, and I appreciate the opportunity to address this matter directly. First and foremost, I want to emphasize that my presence at these meetings is rooted in a commitment to being engaged and seeking a thorough understanding of the issues facing our county. These are open public meetings, and my attendance reflects my dedication to being as informed and prepared as possible to serve our constituents effectively. While I respect the structure of committee assignments, I believe that limiting participation solely to assigned members can inadvertently create silos of information, where knowledge is isolated within small groups rather than shared openly. This can lead to gaps in understanding and hinder our ability to make well-rounded decisions as a board. By attending these meetings, I gain valuable insights that help me contribute more meaningfully to broader discussions and ensure that critical information is not trapped within a single committee. It is important to note that even when multiple supervisors are present, we are not discussing county business outside of this public forum, nor are we violating any open meeting laws. My presence is about listening, learning, and ensuring that I am fully prepared to represent the interests of our community. I have always been and will continue to be prepared to compromise and collaborate with my colleagues. Collaboration is essential to effective governance, and I value the diverse perspectives that each of us brings to the table. However, I want to be clear that while I'm willing to compromise and work together, I will never capitulate on my core principles or my commitment to serving the public good. My attendance at these meetings is not about overstepping boundaries, but about fulfilling my responsibility to be an informed and engaged representative. I hope we can all view my presence at these meetings as an opportunity to strengthen our collective efforts rather than as a point of contention. Let's focus on how we can work together to ensure that all supervisors have the information and context they need to make the best decisions for our county. I am confident that by maintaining open lines of communication and mutual respect, we can serve our community effectively and with integrity. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Kendrick, let me wake up.
I think I went to EDA meeting and West Piedmont meeting, and let's see, there was another one. I can't even remember what it was now, and I'm not going to refute any of that. We'll, we'll talk about that later.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Perry?
I had other things going on, and unfortunately, I missed the STEP meeting. I always enjoy STEP. They're wonderful. And then I attended the Park, ICD Heart Park meeting, Woolwise Park. So I've gotten a couple of grants, ones to improve the bike trails, and they've already started on that, and the other one is to improve some of the park functions and to bring the facilities to ADA compliance. That's all I've done this past month, and also I haven't heard a lot about our audit, and so I would just like to remind people that we did get an audit report, and again, it just shows how the county is growing and thriving, and leaps and bounds, and what we're doing is, is working. We just have to hang in there. So feel free to, whatever your web search is, you can type in Patrick County 2024 Audit or Audit Assessment and see the presentation that we had at our work meeting two weeks ago, and then also the full-blown report, so please check that out and see that we are thriving. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Overby?
Nothing, Dan.
Okay, I was at the West Piedmont Planning District. I look forward to working with them. They have a lot of things that, you know, hopefully we can utilize. I have the list of everything that we have. Patrick County has actually worked with them a lot recently, and I want to continue to do that so we can, we can grow, you know, anywhere from the ICD heart trail improvements that Mr. Perry mentioned over there, to I believe a bike wash station and a restroom we've had.
And showers.
Yeah, showers. I attended the Parks and Rec Board meeting. They got a lot of good stuff going on over there. If you haven't met the new director, he's, he's a young go-getter, and I think we're going to go with leaps and bounds with Parks and Rec over the next few, several years. They're finishing up basketball, where we've now started basically looking at soccer and softball as well, so, you know, come out, support our kids, you know. If you want something enjoyable, go to a four-year-old soccer game or a T-ball game. That's a fun afternoon. It really is, and where else are you going to get that much fun for $3? The Planning Commission, I believe Mr. Overby meets on next Tuesday? Yeah, and they're going to seek public input that night, I believe? So if you're interested in that, you might want to look at the Planning Commission as well. I hope to be able to attend that as well. I would like to hear what people have to say about some of the solar information that we, that we've tasked them with, and that's all I have for now. With that being said, anything else before we go into closed meeting? If not, we will go into closed meeting if we have somebody to make a motion for us?
I've got that, but I want to verify, you wanted to talk about some salaries in closing. What else did you want to go in? Like, so when I read this, I get to try?
Individual salaries and some issues with the county administrator.
I just want to put on the record that I'm, I'm still concerned that employees aren't being noticed at, on some of these subjects. Certainly think we have a right to be noticed and be able to prepare.
So I move that the board convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider the following personnel matters: individual salaries and the county administrator position, public service authority for the Blue Ridge District, Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program, the ASAP at large, and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A30 to discuss the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county, and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the discussion of acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in open meeting will adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy.
Second.
Okay, end of discussion. If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?